I hereby call this meeting the Board of Education to Order. The longest attendance, please rise for the pleasure of the ladies and gentlemen. The pleasure of the ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, I am glad to be here today to present my address to the House of Representatives. One nation, one God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. This evening, we're up for our recognition session. And we have two very special recognitions that the Board would like to call out this evening. The first one is in regards to the awarding of the Danbury High School diploma. For those of you who may not know, Connecticut State Law Cast, I believe it was in 2000, stipulates that a local Board of Education may order diploma to a veteran of World War II who left high school prior to graduation in order to serve in the armed forces of the United States and did not receive a diploma as a consequence of such service. There is someone fits that description this evening, a true American hero by the name of Thomas Davis Kraska. Unfortunately, Mr. Kraska passed away earlier this year, but the Board would like to recognize his high school diploma in recognition of his service to his country. I will just elaborate a little bit on Mr. Kraska's background. He was an eighty-two and a lifelong Danbury resident, and he did serve in World War II. At the age of seventeen, he asked his father to sign an authorization so that he could join the United States Navy. He was a veteran of World War II, proudly serving on the USS Shelby attack transport, APA 105, as a ship's cook, third class, and his battle station was the forty-millimeter gun crew. He was in part of the initial invasion of Okinawa on April 1st, 1945, and he was a member of the Magic Harbor Fleet who helped bring home the troops who were in the Philippines where they were detained for thirty-four months. He was a recipient of several medals, the American Theater Medal, the Asiatic Pacific Medal with one star, and the Victory Medal. And then following his service in World War II, he spent the rest of his life in Danbury, among other things, working for forty-five years for HAMCO. And so in recognition of this lifelong Danburing and true American hero, the Board would like to recognize the Danbury High School diploma. Here with us this evening is his niece, Joan, and we'd like to call Joan to dance to receive Mr. Kraska's diploma.
It's beautiful.
The mayor's here as well, you know, we appreciate it. Thank you.
All I'd like to say is thank you very much. I know he would love, he wanted this so bad. And here's a picture. Sorry! Open again. Thank you again. And I know he's, he's looking over. He sees this. I don't know what to say!
I'd like to recognize in the audience not only Mayor Battman, but Patrick Walter, he's the Director of Veterans Affairs in City Danbury. Thank you, Mr. Walter.
Do you have other guests here with you as well?
Well, this is Jerry, my other half. And this is Delvee, a very good friend of Tom. That's him, yes.
Everybody, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our second recognition this evening is in relation to Nancy Vermon. Nancy has been a teacher, reading teacher at the Alternative Center for about twenty-five years. She recently was named the Teacher of the Year, and we'd like to call Mrs. Vermon to the dance in recognition of her award. We appreciate all that you do and your lifelong service to the district, and we congratulate you on being a Teacher of the Year.
If I may just take one moment of your time to say two major things. First of all, I am truly honored to accept this award, and I do so not just for myself, but on behalf of the entire ACE family. We are a family, we work together, and I rely on every person that works in that building every day to accomplish all the wonderful things that go on at the Alternative Center. The other thing I'd like to say is that I have been a teacher at the Alternative Center for the past twenty-five years, and I have never wanted to be anywhere else, and I'm leaving with one thought: I am just so proud to be a Danbury public school teacher. Well, thank you.
Good discussion, actually, this evening. On the agenda is the City Council's Possible Action on 2010-2011 Appropriation. Just a little bit of background before the occasion of discussion. This relates to action that the Board passed in June. At our first meeting in June, the Board passed administrative raises for several individuals. At our second meeting in June, those raises were upheld, we had a relook at those. So our second meeting in June, the basic effect of that is to confirm what we did in the interim. Following our June activity, the City Council had a meeting in July, and at that meeting, they established an ad hoc committee to review the actions that were in June. That committee met in August, I believe it was the twenty-fifth of August, and the ad hoc report is at your place that was recently published in advance of the September City Council meeting. And at that meeting, there was a motion that was passed to reserve $35,300 of the permanent appropriations actions expected to take place at the City Council meeting this Thursday. It was on the agenda, and so those are the actions that have taken place so far. I'd like to give the floor to Mayor Battman, if you wish to, and I think those are the facts as we see them here today, but I would prefer you if you'd like to make a comment.
Yeah, sure, and I, first of all, thanks, it's good to see everybody, and I was not initially able to attend tonight. I had a little bit of a change in schedule, so I'd like to give some advice. If you got an email, ignore it. Let me just kind of give you a little bit of background, why the Council took the action and talk, and what I anticipate happening, frankly, why the rationale wasn't. And let me just start by saying, this is not a reflection on the Board's authority, ability, statutory authority to determine how best it wants its money spent and where it wants to allocate its resources. Everybody understands that, everybody gets that on the City Council. So, the actions taken Thursday night anticipate the probability, the high probability, that it won't make a bit of difference in terms of the actions taken by the Board previously this summer as it related to salary benefit increases. But here's where the City Council is coming from, and frankly, where I'm coming from. One is that with all due respect to all of the individuals that received salary increases, I'm not suggesting they're not worth it, or they're not doing a good job, they are. You know, I know all of them personally and individually over the years, and I've gotten to be supporters of the work that they do. But the issue comes down to, first off, an issue of precedence. If you give raises to your non-union folks, discretionary raises, not required by any contractual obligation, you then obligate the Council, myself, to give raises to my non-union folks. Now, my group is bigger than your group, so while people say, "Well, thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand, whatever the number is, doesn't make a lot of money," it's not. But when you pack that in and compare that to my group, now I've got to come up with a couple hundred thousand dollars for raises on my side, because my cabinet hasn't had a raise in eighteen months. So, there's that issue of precedence in terms of equity. Is it fair to say to one group you don't get a raise and another group you do? And at some point, somewhere, somebody's got to say, "Enough! We frankly can't afford raises in an era where we're laying off employees, we don't have textbooks, with a whole lot of the challenges we have in the district, we miraculously come up with money for raises." So I have an issue with equity, and it's a valid one for my staff. So your $35,000 expenditure here turns into a much larger expenditure on the other side of the ledger, just so we're clear. The second piece of this is negotiations. Without divulging strategy, and who wants what, and how much we're going to spend where, all of us are going into negotiations with our units, I believe. I know teachers are up, I think administrators may be up. Yes, they're both. Okay, so that's two collective bar reunions, and I don't know about your custodians, and I think your custodians are wrapped up and whatever, but you've got at least two here. I've got six on my side. First thing they ask is when we go into negotiations, is they go back and look at, "What did the administrators get?" And that becomes baseline for you. So again, you're thirty-five thousand, now it's a hundred and eighty thousand, that becomes a two-million-dollar raise, because you can't say no to teachers, you can't say no to clerical staff, to firefighters and police officers, if you couldn't say no to the administrators who are right in front of you. So, the problem is that it becomes an ever-expanding universe of increasing salary costs and benefit costs going forward. So, that's really the two reasons, I would say, that the Council is concerned. Now, I started this conversation by saying, "Look, it's clear that the Council understands that they can't tell you what to do and how to spend your money, that's up to you. The only thing they can do is appropriate money. Obviously, we have a legal opinion that says we can take the action, the Council can take the action, feels it contained. And you still can go give the raises, that's up to you, but we don't have to fund it." And that's simply, we're a member of the Board. So with that, I know this discussion is under my list.
Thank you, Mayor Battman, and thank you for your attendance. We appreciate your input.
Anything for you.
Before we continue the discussion, I just wanted to bring across some points. There are really two separate issues, and one of them is whether the Council really can do this. But I don't believe we even need to get to that issue, because the raises or the increases themselves, I think the Board's rationale behind that is, has a very solid foundation in and of itself. I think I just wanted to address some of the points that were brought up in the ad hoc report that really failed to reflect some of the Board's rationale and its decision. And I really wanted to express those concerns, because I think it's important, whether we're justifying ourselves to the City Council, the public, any constituent, I don't think it matters one way or the other, whether it's new it is. But I feel that any decision that we made needs to be justified to the public at large. But one of the main points that has been brought up is the fact of the Board, the fact that we were in an era where we couldn't position, et cetera, and there was money for raises. These dollars do not exist in a vacuum. As an example, the largest single item of this amount refers to a stipend that we're paying our HR director for legal services. And this is something that the Board debated quite a lot over the past month or two, as to whether this was appropriate or not. Before the Board considered this for approval, we had sent our finance director back to do an analysis of what our current legal expenses had been, given our use of our very expensive outside attorney, to see exactly what we could save if we were to do more of this work in-house. And the report that came back to the Board was roughly about a seventy-some-odd-thousand-dollar savings each year on legal fees if we were to have our inside HR director do this work for us, which in the past had not been done. We used to rely very heavily on Tom Mooney and his staff for every legal question that came up, every negotiation, every session, and settled. And the Board considered that very carefully, and it took the better part of a year for us to be in agreement that that's what we should do. This idea first came up in the fall last year, and in my opinion, we really weren't convinced until we had a year's worth of experience to say, "Look, Mr. Gray, our prior HR director, who was not paid for that, but, again, we wanted to see whether the work could be done, and if it could be done, could it be done effectively? And if it could be done effectively, could it be done saving money?" And I believe the last year of experience shows that that was indeed the case. And that's a cost-benefit that was pretty easy for us to contemplate, paying $15,000 and in return, about $70,000 on average, and that'll bear a near a year, but I think that's a win for the district. In terms of the other raises for the other individuals, and again, those raises were considered as a group, not individually, but if you look at the budget lines that consist of these people, directors, supervisors, assistant superintendent, superintendent, what the Board has been able to do, not just in this past budget year, but going back a year before when we reorganized, is that we've been significant, we've been able to significantly reduce the FTEs at those levels. And by doing so, again, part of that is partly work on the remaining people, but we've actually been able to save significant amounts of cost at the highest levels of salary in the district. One of the analyses I had Mr. Wong do recently is take a look at those five budget lines over the past four years since Dr. Pasquarel's effective office, and what you'll find is that those salary lines are down about a million dollars since we started in '06. And that's taking into account all the raises that we've incurred for principals and administrators, et cetera, although there hasn't been much of that recently. But a lot of that reduction has taken place in the last year or two as a result of reorganizations, as a result of retirements, not filling positions, and redistributing the work to the remaining staff. One example of that is Rice, our HR, our IT director, retired at the end of last year, Dr. Glass is assuming that directly, and so the entire IT department reports to Dr. Glass. Is that the best operational decision? Probably not, but again, the times that we're in now require us to find money in as many quantities as we can so that we can limit the reductions that we have across the district. That's one example, and there are several others of cases where we're trying to find money in different places, and if we can get a nominal amount of money to someone to take on a significant amount of extra work, I think that's a big part of the Board's thinking in our most recent deliberations. I probably don't want to go down the path, but the other justification, whether the Council may or may not, they're not able to do it, but I would entertain discussions with the rest of the Board. So that's the end of my comments. Since the rest of the Board have a couple.
Right here. Mr. Tabersek. Okay, I don't agree with you on this one, as far as the comments of, I see the City Council and the Mayor usurping the responsibility and powers that they give us by most illegal momentum. I just underline something in this, Attorney Hunter advised that the Court could be petitioned by the Board of Ed to render a decision on this matter. I asked our Human Resources Director and our Attorney Tom, he had been asked about the legality of this, the fact that, were they usurping? Because I'm not a lawyer. May I, may I get my words in, Mr. Mayor? You know, I'm not even sure you have, you have the power to be here at this point, to be honest with you.
Well, I'm an existential member of the Board, and we just said we weren't going to call Tom Mooney for any advice, now you got to call to get advice.
No, no, I said, and then I asked, may I? No. There's a division of power, as a social studies teacher, you know all about checks and balances, division of power and all, so that's, you know, that's the baloney. I asked Ms. Thompson if she could seek the opinion of some lawyer, and she did say that she did talk to someone in the state, and I just would, could you pretty much tell the rest of the Board what you told me, okay? Because I do admit I'm not a lawyer, okay?
Thank you. You posed the question directly whether we had contacted not only someone for illegal opinion, but also whether we had spoken with the state. And in fact, we did have a conversation with the chief lawyer representing the state Department of Education, who advised us that there is no, no regulation that permits or allows the City Council to undertake this kind of action. There have also been quite a few legal opinions rendered, particularly with regard to what the City Council is allowed to, allowed to do with respect to budget allocation once it's been made, and that the law is fairly clear now that once the allocation has been made, that the City Council can then come back and explain how it is, dictate how it is, and that money should be spent. So, we did, we did actually make some assumptions in order to find out in a very cost-effective way what sort of backing there would be for the Board on this matter. I think it's pretty clear that the Board's got full discretion to spend the money that's been appropriated in the manner that it seems fit.
Okay, the other question, was there, I think we asked, was there any precedent that what the City Council and Mayor is doing throughout the state, that, you know, this is a first?
Right, we were told that this, in fact, was their first experience with this sort of a take-back of a previously appropriated funding.
Okay, I'd just like to make one other point. I also know, and I think we have one or two words on this, we do understand thirty-five thousand in court cases is a no-win if anybody, that, you know, that we understand, but it's a question here of, you know, just what our responsibility is, where the line is, and what the city's responsibilities, that's what I'm worried about. And I'll be honest with you, if I had the money like some of our other politicians have, I would fund it myself, but I don't. The Court can say, "No." Okay? No, oh, yeah, yeah.
Ms. Malera.
First of all, let me see if I can say this. Mr. Mayor, I'm so glad that you're here tonight for this conversation, and I want you to know that this Board never took it lightly, spending the taxpayers' dollars, never took it lightly. However, I would challenge your group to save as much money as this group has over the past two years. If you could report that with a two-and-a-half percent increase or a one-and-a-half percent increase in their salary, let's see what they come up with with cost savings, because our group did that. Our group came up with cost savings. And I understand that perception is reality in this world, and I know that you have to go before your unions and say, "You can't have the money." And they'll say, "Well, how come the Board got the money?" Well, the entire Board did not get the money, but the few got the money that saved us. How much was it, Irving? Two million?
We're down a million dollars for the last year. For the last two years, we're down about a million dollars, that's fine.
And perhaps if we did it by percentages, you know, if your, if your groups can save the percentage that this group did, maybe it would be cost-effective and you could get the raises.
Well, we could, but you don't want to go there, because the money isn't, you just don't want to go there, because we've saved proportionally many, many, we have forty unfilled positions right now in my organization. So, that's not, it's not an analysis that you really want to do, proportionally speaking. I saved 1.6 million dollars on one bond issuance by refinancing the whole bond. But you know what? I didn't take the money and give it to my administrators, I gave it back to the taxpayers where it belongs. This is a time when we have 10% unemployment rate, we have people losing their homes out there. We don't have the moral authority to go out and give raises while people out there are unemployed. And as far as, I understand, and I've read the rationales for why, for example, the emerging of the legal services along with the HR director, and it's a solid move, but it's not going to save any money, because unless you can show me this entire year, you're never going to call Tom Mooney or have him participate in any negotiations, because that's not going to happen. You're going to call Tom, you already did by mob's assistance. So, you know, the minute you call those guys, you know, we all know that the clock starts ticking and it's 200 bucks a night. So, having said, and there will be cost savings already later down the line, because in the year three, four, and five, once there's an institutional memory and knowledge of all the contracts that have been negotiated, then you don't need Tom Mooney to come and interpret the contract that's been done. But your initial savings won't be nearly what you thought it was, and if you're making that decision long-term wise, it's fine. But this is more about message than even is about the money. What message do we send to that family that's going into foreclosure, and we found time to give raises to administrators that make a significant amount of money? What message do we send? That's all.
For your order, for the first time. First, being on both sides, I mean, both sides, being on the school board and the County Council, the Council cannot, and we already, the mayor's already admitted, can't help with this matter, or with this matter, but they can cause the money. And if I was on their side, and for some reason, they can't, I'd cut you next year, and then probably even more. If I was the Council, I voted for this particular pay raise, and I told you that I probably have to take the heat for some of this, and I will. But what I, what you're threatening is, as Mr. Tabersek says, "Call Tom Mooney." First, Mr. Tabersek can't, you can't. I request for anybody to call out Tom Mooney, like, we can answer you out there, only the Chairman and the Board Superintendent to call out Tom Mooney. If I see anybody, I'm going to put a flag, calling Tom Mooney or anybody else to spend money. Just want to let you know that. So, we're from there. But I have to back it, just the Board backs it, but I can understand where the rest is coming from, through this one part.
How do you ask your teachers next year to take theirs? You think that's going to fly?
No, and I don't think you're going to.
Of course not, because you gave everybody a raise! So what's going to happen is teachers are going to say, "No, the superintendent, no disrespect the salary," or anybody else, "They got a raise, I want a raise too." Now you're $30,000, Bob is $2 million, and that's the problem.
All right, just to be clear, we went into arbitration, didn't we, with the administrators? We ended up losing money. We ended up losing money. I mean, I'm not, I mean, we cut it, we denied it, they got what they wanted, plus we had to pay an arbitrary, I mean, I don't know what to tell you. Unless the arbitrary is on some other level.
And in especially anything I've read of the state telling us that we have to pay folks and be on the side of trying to protect the taxpayers and protect their home than to arbitrarily give our raises when we have the choice not to.
Any last questions?
I'd just like to clarify something, Mr. Scott's father. Okay, the question was, I asked if we could. Because I don't know. And our resource person said.
And I hope she didn't.
No, no, I asked her, I said, "Because, you know, the legal thing, I brought this up before, you know that, right? Okay, no, but the law is, and so forth, this has been brought up." So I asked her, and what Kim told me was that she talked to the state, the person, right, Ms. Stanley, I think that's what she said. Okay, but to be honest, there was no, you know, I didn't know, I said, "Can we get a legal opinion?" Okay, and pretty much what we heard about the state without any. And like I'm saying, to me, the big issue is, I feel it's not really legal, like, the withholding of the appropriation, but that would have to be decided in the court, and nobody wants to do that, because again, it costs so much money. But I still think that the general problem is where, you know, where the line is.
We cannot, we cannot go to court with this, that's just plain stupid, just plain absolutely stupid. And if I was on the County Council, and they go us, next year I'd whack you more. In fact, I would go for it. I'll be on the school board next year, and I'll tell you, I'll vote no verdict, maybe I only have six votes, but I'll tell you, I'll be thinking, staying wherever I see you. And I'll also tell you that I'll have more people out there, and I do respect the taxpayers. They, they're the ones that pay our freight.
But we are taxpayers.
Yes, so am I. But you want to pay my five hundred dollars, I just paid that for this year? You can, and I'm going to shut up. Five hundred dollars more this year I paid. You want to pay more? I'm not.
If it's for a good cause, I'd pay you.
Good, you can pay my taxes.
I think we've covered it pretty much, Mr. Chair.
If I could just add one more thing, I just want to kind of explain the underpinning, because the attorney you consulted may not be aware of what the underpinning is. Without beating a dead horse, when the Council feels that when they asked Dr. Pasquarel, in other words, let me take a step back, when Dr. Pasquarel submitted the Board's budget in February, the raises were clearly delineated. The Council's under the assumption, obviously, assuming that you didn't get 4.2 million, that the first thing you would cover would be raises for administration, discretionary, they're right there, it's easy, low-end group board. So when they went to the committee, the Council asked Dr. Pasquarel, "Are you giving raises to your administrators?" And his response was, "I don't know, we'll have to see." A word to that. So their feeling is, given a chance to re-vote on the appropriation, the lavender appropriation, because they
That permits or allows the city council to undertake this kind of action. There have also been quite a few legal opinions rendered, particularly with regard to what the city council is allowed to do with respect to budget allocation once it's been made and that the law is fairly clear now that once the allocation has been made that the city council can then come back and explain how it is or dictate how it is in that money should be spent. So we did actually make some on pause and then after to find out in a very cost-effective way what sort of backing there would be for the board on this matter. I think it's pretty clear that the board's got full discretion to spend the money that's been appropriated in the manner that it sees fit.
Okay, the other question was there, I think we asked, was there any precedent that what the city council mayor is doing throughout the state that, you know, this is a first?
Right, we were told that this, in fact, was their first experience with this, sort of a take-back of a previously appropriated funding.
Okay, I'd just like to make one other point. I also know, and I think we have one or two words on this, we do understand thirty-five thousand in court cases is a no win if anybody, that we understand, but it's a question here, you know, just what our responsibility is, where the line is, and what the city's responsibilities, that's what I'm worried about. And I'll be honest with you, if I had the money like some of our other politicians have, I would fund it myself, but I don't. Of course, I don't. Okay? No, oh, yeah, yeah.
Ms. Mayor.
First of all, let me see if I can say this. Mr. Mayor, I'm so glad that you're here tonight for this conversation, and I want you to know that this board never took it lightly, spending the taxpayers' dollars, never took it lightly. However, I would challenge your group to save as much money as this group has over the past two years. If you could report that with a two-and-a-half percent increase or a one-and-a-half percent increase in their salary, let's see what they come up with with cost savings, because our group did that. Our group came up with the cost savings. And I understand that perception is reality in this world, and I know that you have to go before your unions and say, you can't have the money. And they'll say, well, how come the board got the money? Well, the entire board did not get the money, but the few got the money that saved us. How much was it, Irving? Two million?
We're down a million dollars from last year. For the last two years, we're down about a million dollars, that's why.
And perhaps if we did it by percentages, you know, if your groups can save the percentage that this group did, maybe it would be cost-effective and you could give the raises.
Well, we could, but you don't want to go there, because the money isn't, you just don't want to go there, because we've saved proportionally many, many, we have forty unfilled positions right now in my own administration. So that's not an analysis that you really want to do, proportionally speaking. I saved one point six million dollars on one bond issuance by refinancing the whole bond. But you know what? I didn't take the money and give it to my administrators, I gave it back to the taxpayers where it belongs. This is a time when we have ten percent unemployment rate, we have people losing their homes out there. We don't have the moral authority to go out and give raises while people out there are unemployed. And as far as, I understand, and I've read the rationales for why, for example, the emerging of the legal services along with the HR director, and it's a solid move, but it's not going to save any money, because unless you can show me this entire year, you're never going to call Tom Mooney or have him participate in any negotiations, because that's not going to happen. You're going to call Tom Mooney. You already did by mob's assistance. So, you know, the minute you call those guys, you know, we all know that the clock starts ticking and it's two hundred bucks amount. So having said, and there will be cost savings already later down the line, because in the year three, four, and five, once there's an institutional memory and knowledge of all the contracts that have been negotiated, then you don't need Tom Mooney to come and interpret the contract that's been done. But your initial savings won't be nearly what you thought it was, and if you're making that decision long-term wise, it's fine. But this is more about message than even is about the money. What message do we send to that family that's going into foreclosure, and we found time to give raises to administrators that make a significant amount of money? What message do we send? That's all.
For the first time. First, being on both sides, I mean, both sides, being on the school board and the county council, the council cannot, we already, the mayor's already admitted, can't tell us what to do, or what to say, but they can cause the money. And if I was on their side, and for some reason they can't, I'd cut you next year, and then probably even more if I was the council. I voted for this particular pay raise, and I told you that I probably have to take the heat for some of this, and I will. But what you're threatening is, as Mr. Tabersek says, call Tom Mooney. First, Mr. Tabersek can't, you can't. I request for anybody to call Tom Mooney, like, we can answer you out there, only the chairman and the superintendent to call Tom Mooney. If I see anybody, I'm going to put a flag, calling Tom Mooney or anybody else to spend money. Just wanted to know that. So, but I have to back it, this board backs it, but I can understand where the mayor's coming from, through this one.
How do you ask your teachers next year to take theirs? Do you think that's going to fly?
No, and I don't think you're going to.
Because you gave everybody a raise. So what's going to happen is teachers are going to say, no, the superintendent, no disrespect to Sal or anybody else, they got a raise, I want a raise too. Now you're thirty thousand dollars, Bob is two million dollars, and that's the problem.
Mark, just to say, we went into arbitration, didn't we, with the administrators? We ended up losing money. We ended up losing money. I mean, I'm not, I mean, we cut it, we denied it, they got what they wanted, plus we had to pay an arbitrary, I mean, I don't know what to tell you. Unless the arbitrary is on some other level.
And in addition to anything I've read, the state tells us that we have to pay folks and be on the side of trying to protect the taxpayers and protect their home than to arbitrarily give our raises when we have the choice not to.
Any last questions?
I'd just like to clarify something, Mr. Scarsenfather. Okay, the question was, I asked if we could. Because I don't know. And our resource person said.
And I hope she didn't.
No, no, I asked her, I said, because, you know, the legal thing, I brought this up before, you know that, right? Okay, no, but the lawyers and so forth, that's been brought up. So I asked her, and what Kim told me was that she talked to the state, the person, right, Ms. Stenler, I think that's what she said. Okay, but to be honest, there was no, you know, I didn't know, I said, can we get a legal opinion? Okay, and pretty much what we heard about the state without hearing. And like I'm saying, to me, the big issue is, I feel it's not really legal, like, the withholding of the appropriation, but that would have to be decided in the court, and nobody wants to do that, because again, it costs so much money. But I still think that the general problem is where, you know, where the line is.
We cannot, we cannot go to court with this, that's just plain stupid, just plain absolutely stupid. And if I was on the county council, and they go us, next year I'd whack you more. In fact, I would go for it. I'll be on the school board next year, and I'll tell you, I'll vote no further, maybe I only have six votes, but I'll tell you, I'll be thinking, staying the river seat. And I'll also tell you that I'll have more people out there, and I do respect the taxpayers. They're the ones that pay our freight.
But we are taxpayers.
Yes, so am I. But you want to pay my five hundred dollars and just pay that for this year? You can, and I'm going to shut up. Five hundred dollars more this year I paid. You want to pay more? I'm not.
If it's for a good cause, I'd pay you.
Good, you can pay my taxes.
Any further discussion?
I think we've covered it pretty much, Mr. Chairman. If I could just add one more thing, I just want to kind of explain the underpinning, because the attorney you consulted may not be aware of what the underpinning is. Without beating a dead horse, when the council feels that when they asked Dr. Paschere, in other words, let me take a step back, when Dr. Paschere submitted the board's budget in February, the raises were clearly delineated. The council's under the assumption, obviously, assuming that you didn't get four point two million, that the first thing you would cover would be raises for administration, discretionary, they're right there, it's easy, low-end group board. So when they went to the committee, the council asked Dr. Paschere, are you giving raises to your administrators? And his response was, I don't know, we'll have to see. A worse set of. So their feeling is, given a chance to re-vote on the appropriation, the lavender appropriation, because they weren't given all the information that they felt was necessary, just so we understand that the legal underpinnings there, and we've done all of our legal research on this and whatever. Having said that, I think two things can happen. One, I think Mr. Scarsenfather is right, probably silly to go to court and fight over thirty-five or thirty thousand dollars.
Nobody's saying that, Tom.
No, I'm just saying, but two, we're going to have a serious problem from the city council getting another nickel out of them next year. That's done, we've got twenty-one people calling us, and I don't see anybody voting for, you know, voting for reinstating the dollars. So we're going to have to have discussions from now until next year about how are we going to craft our next year's appropriation. We're going to have to talk about negotiations, so that what we're offering on our side of the budget, similar to what you're offering, because people will wedge, they'll use as a wedge, what teachers got, or what parent professionals got, whoever got, on our side of the budget. And if we're going to control these costs, and they're explosive, of your four point two million dollars last year and Ilyas got here, two million dollars were for raises. And the teacher side of the budget, not even for the administrators. So they're explosive, and we don't control these. You're going to have Dr. Paschere, and myself, and maybe Ilyas here to turn out the lights when it's all done, because we have to lay everybody off. That's not something I created, every city in town in this state is dealing with this across the country. So either we own it, and understand this is a new economic era, and the old rules don't apply, and yes, this is unprecedented. You're right. And you're going to see other cities and towns do this across the state and across the country, because it's unsustainable to capital. So my suggestion is, going forward, somehow we've got to get together early on and start crafting these budgets so that they marry up, try to get our level of benefit, particularly healthcare, on the same playing field for everyone, because there's value in the economy this time. So that's just a thought.
Further discussion?
It's really difficult for me, because I'm part of this, you know, I know that, but this doesn't help. The junctures that left here to see this discussion between us, clearly, there's been a lot of strife throughout Connecticut with municipalities, recalls and what have you. There was a message to be sent, we sent the message for the kind of work we thought was going on, and we ordered it, and we got a message back as to how that was received and internalized. I think, Bob, clearly, there's a technicality, a technicality to make rich lawyers, and for us to be able to serve the town at this time is not in the best interest of the kids. So for me, if the city comes over with us, they need to do what they need to do, we need to do what we need to do. But going forward, I am worrying strategically where we are next year, and if working together as the mayor just indicated needs to happen, I advise us to do that and do it quickly so that we can begin our strategy and move forward. The decision to go to a lawyer, not just one for the board, I don't see where it adds value to what we can hear, relationship-wise, school-wide, reputation-wise, or just planning the business of trying to run the schools, which we all know is difficult enough and running counterfeits, that's, that would be my two cents.
Mr. Scarsen, I just would like to again clarify something. I was not advocating going to a formal law thing, I just was trying to bring the issue out in the open and to the public. I said, no one wins, and no one wants to go to it, but the thing is, if you feel something is wrong, point it out, if you feel that maybe I'm wrong, then point it out also. Okay? But the point was, there was no one saying that we should force this idea. If that's what you thought I said, that isn't what I meant, okay?
I was in favor of the racism, and I have to stay there because I don't back off at all when I make any decisions, what I say. And the council knows, rappers, and I think they will, and I think that they can't tell us what to do, I already know that. I mean, we didn't have to get a opinion about that, that's law. But we have to find somewhere else, and next year, we're going to have to think twice about getting anybody to do this, we're going to have to go to arbitration and let the law forward. I think the mayor, Mark, I think you're probably going to have to be the same, like, come on, you're, I think this is the way it's going to be. I don't think you're wrong, I think, generally.
You can walk in, in fact, you can keep your job.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You can walk in. Mr. Chairman, I might just want to say, just to kind of reiterate what Sal and Dr. Paschere are saying, let's make no mistake, Dr. Paschere, Ilyas, myself, Davis St. Elia, we can't sleep at night thinking about what's coming in the next couple of years. This is just at the very beginning of a long fall in terms of this economy, getting back on our feet, and in terms of revenue to this city. And I think sometimes it might benefit us communicating a little bit about just some of the challenges that we're facing on our side, revenue collection, stuff that you may never even know that even goes on, so you can understand, you know, sort of the view I have. There's a great book out there called Lions, Tigers, and Bears, and sometimes you've got to have the lion's view of the whole complete city to understand the services you have to deliver, how you have to pay for them, where the money comes from, in order to be a really good tiger. So you guys are the tigers, it's a really bad analogy, but my point being that, you know, we have to, we've just, we've got to figure stuff out going forward, and I think negotiations are a good opportunity to do that, particularly our health care plan. If we could get police, fire, teachers, all on the same health care plan, instead of having three separate, there's a tremendous value in that. So there's opportunities where we could get an IT bill, you know, I'm sorry and happy for you that you've taken that over, but if there's value in us working together in the IT department, we should explore that, because we are reworking our IT department right now. So there's just opportunities to go forward.
Mr. Scarsen. We are involved, you know, in negotiations, and probably arbitration is going to be, you know, the result, that looks like it's almost automatic, everything. We could really use Mr. St. Elia doing what you do, bringing the city's position when arbitration comes up, which almost certainly will at one point or another. That would be one way that the city could help us, because, Bill, you have the facts when it comes to taxes and so forth. Okay? So, you know, it's a two-way street. Also, you know, what's been very good, I think, with the negotiations, and there's been a liaison, just about at every meeting, this has been improvements since when I first started, and so, you know, I think there's a certain working together that's up and happening. So no one's saying it's even.
At least I'm just not, but, you know, I do want it to be clear, it's not a reflection of his performance, Sal and I talk probably two or three times a day sometimes, it's not like we're not communicating.
And I would agree, it's, as I said earlier, we have to kind of work together earlier. I think communication is the key to make sure that we're all on the same page, you know, the city's financial, the city's finances are, what the system are, and vice versa.
And the state council. Of course, if I get to be a tenant governor, you'll have more money in Las Vegas.
I would bet on that.
You can bet on that.
I just wanted to say that I was against, I voted against raises, and I can stand by that decision, but I want to say, I agree with Dr. Paschere, I think it's just time to move on, accept the county council's decision, and just look more actively forward to see what we can build about relationship, about tax legislation, and make sure that we have the money we need, the money that we need to give these kids a quality education. I also want to say, Dr. Les, you know, I want to thank you for taking on the IT responsibilities, and I think you're crazier than ever for doing it, and I don't think anybody in this town appreciates or can appreciate all the work that you've done to hire this kid on behalf of the kids, and how much love these kids have given to them. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I just have one comment, and I wish you luck with your upcoming, whatever. Anyway, I think the reason we lose an arbitration, maybe you've just done to find a job in there, because the arbitrators think that we are able to do that. So thanks for that.
Seeing no further discussion, I'd like to thank the mayor for attending this evening. I think the discussion is very beneficial for all of us, and we should continue the dialogue going forward. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
It's been a pleasure, Mr. Chairman. We do have a request to get the 2020 task force up and running, so Dr. Paschere and I will be working closely on that, closer to breaking that minimum requirement.
Thank you. Just one also recognize, Mr. Chinese, city council, in the audience, thank you very much for attending as well.
Ben, you're hiding, why are you hiding? You're back in town, I didn't see you.
Move on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Paschere, you have the floor.
You guys want to take a break, Matt?
No. We should take a break, because we lost the board.
The board just walked out of the room.
Oh, I'm back.
There's something, the committee that's working on the restructuring, looking at enrollment patterns, we know that the middle schools are growing to the point where they're going to be just maybe running up to thirteen to fourteen hundred. Currently, right now, I want to say they're running about eleven hundred a piece, they're about eleven twenty a piece. And in their watch, they're the question, when they build those schools, they did build up, didn't expand infrastructure, and so it's created some real challenges to get those youngsters through that building and to deal with their educational needs appropriately. So we have been looking at some options. You know, we started with STEM as a way of balancing out our enrollment between Rogers Park and Broadview, and that's helped somewhat. But at some point soon, probably soon being maybe two years, so you're going to have to seriously look at what are we going to do with this, with these youngsters, particularly that middle school, and not even talking about the elementary. So along comes this charter school application last week, and it's one that had to be distributed to us, because that was part of Race to the Top. And let me try not to confuse you, but here's the message that we received. We had to send a grant application out, because it was part of our requirement. We know there isn't any money to fund it, but we do want to make a known difference. The reason why I have an interest in it, as I'm following up, is that there's going to be a change of administration at the state level. Connecticut is way behind in this charter offerings. They know they have to increase charter offerings for a number of reasons, and the Chef O'Neill legalization issue, that they're trying to work out, those racial imbalances and gender gaps and also achievement gaps. The thinking there is that with new administration from either side of the aisle, both talking about the need for challenging characters who are adding some charter schools. So the charter school application, if we complete, which is pretty exhausting, but if we complete the application, it's going to require us to look at what that other school may look like, and maybe the STEM, that's what the board wants to do, we'd have to have some parent input and hearings about it, there has to be a need about why you want to do it, and then we submit the application, knowing quite well that there isn't any funding for it. The reason why I think we ought to consider it is that if we do complete it and we do get it to the state and they approve it, it's queued up for the possibility of funds that may come into the state. Those funds would be local funds from our state itself, and then federal dollars that could flow into the state for charter schools. Connecticut, as you know, has not been rewarded with any of the Race to the Top money, and part of the rationale is that they get no points, quote unquote, for offering alternatives to our regular public school education. So that's why the new administration, whether they're Republican or Democrat, are going to look to charter schools. So Bill and I and the candidates are toying with the idea, you know, do we want to put this on the table? It's going to require taking our STEM and the conversations with Pat before she's there and with Ed, that maybe we use the STEM model, we grow that, and then use that as maybe our application process. They certainly want us to go through the process without me thinking, but it's something that they want us to look at. The state has another alternative called innovative schools, they have the, it's not called pilot, compact schools, those are turnaround schools where it's a different model of rewarding the district for doing this, where you change the faculty, the staff, you know, I'm not looking at, simply looking at, can we grow a charter, this charter school owned by this school district? If we do that, place it somewhere, and then make access to funds to fund it for a while until things financially get better in the state. Bill?
Just as we've been trying to exhaust every potential funding stream, I think, and I have a lot to add, Sal said very, very well, our best shot is probably to do something thematic, such as a STEM academy. The other possibility that we spoke about, blew up, perhaps about saying publicly, because people will take it among them, but the idea that there is interest in helping us possibly move to an expanded magnet school program at AIS, who are a good reputation apparently across the state. So taking that K-5 program, and if funding becomes available, we would expand it to six, seven, and eight, which would be wise for us to do if the enders was there, because then we would draw down on the two middle schools. So if we put the two concepts together, we could expand and create a STEM academy off-site, off-site of Rogers Park, and also expand the magnet school, and that would be enough, probably, for those children to race, so that the two middle schools become manageable with regard to the committed bonds being added up and the projected increase in enrollment for those two sites.
I'm glad that you brought that up, Dr. Les, because I thought of the magnet school, because I think that's an excellent idea. I've always felt that we offer so much to the kids in the magnet school, and then we let them go with whatever they need, and I was always worried that we'd lost into one of the other, maybe Broadview or Rogers Park, so I like the idea of making it K-8. I thought that the STEM academy, is it possible to get funding for a charter school for the STEM academy and the charter school on Middle Ridge Park?
We can get, we can get money anywhere when it comes to jail. Right now, there isn't any money available, you know, so we have the tipping point here of enrollment going up, and specifically at the middle school, and then a building that we have, that around there, it's melded together. If we create a charter school there, and the funding comes to fruition, then there could be money for equipment, the jummin ever money to build unless you do it to this magnet school, which is totally different. Our current magnet school, which was a bonding effort, and it wasn't to town Danbury, it was to the rest, so Danbury did not pay or sell bonds for this, for that. I don't know if that'll be available.
Does funding ever become available for machine existing property?
There had been money, yes, and in fact, New Haven and Bridgeport hit a home run on that. They refurbished all their schools, recreated all their schools some five or six years ago, they went through that process, but then the state stopped funding. If they get in a position to refund it, that's why I'm saying we queue this up, whether it's a charter school or we move towards expanding the magnet school. You can't expand the magnet school with the current magnet school, we all know that. It's limited, but we're ready with the folks right there, you'd have to get another site. But what's particularly popular nowadays, if you can do it, would be to create, you know, two sites at one site, you could have two schools that, sharing infrastructure, busing and everything. So that's a very sound model, first of all. And we're also calling the Baroque schools, their remonents are down, the government is looking at partnerships with universities. Prior to Baroque, we did one with the Bridgeport schools, we were refunded this past year with the Archdiocese, so Bill's going to contact Dr. Ames and ask him if he wants to participate in some of this. So money can come down, but it's just that we're going to have to be queued up to do this, we'll do this, something like this application due October 29th, that's the way this stuff comes around. So if we complete the application, put it forward, then we can see what is coming back, just being fair.
Okay, so then the Middle Ridge site wouldn't be viable for refurbishment for both schools, right?
There are no ones to refurbish.
No, I know, but I mean, there would be a viable option if you could put two.
I'd have to refer, Bob, because that's the committee did the study there. Twenty-five classes.
Twenty-five, yeah, maybe one to two, actually, max twenty-seven.
Is it possible? Yeah, you can, he says, I talked to Pat, had to say, you know, you're going to have to get, what'd you say, from each school. to get, what'd you say, from each school, what would you think, three hundred from each? Six hundred students out of that middle school. Now, if you're going to put six hundred students down there, you're going to be pressed for that. So the idea is there, can you create these other two venues, the magnet school for some expansion, then the STEM for others? And then you could have two schools there. You could have one maybe with four hundred and then a small one fifty community. And that could be elementary, so you can do it. It all depends on where we're going. All I'm saying is that we don't want to be reactive, just try to develop this now, put it together, have the board look at it, you know, lay it through the bed. You have to have some hearings in the public with parents, and then you can complete the application and then it will be queued up to the phone. And then you can decide if you want to execute depending on the funding. All I'm saying, in two years, we're going to be forced into overconfidence to the point where, you know, I ain't even used this word, you may have to split schedule, we may have to split schedule with middle school to get everybody in out. And anybody been through that, it's a nightmare and it's a transportation extension. You don't want to go there, but that's what we may have to do. But the mayor say he's going to activate that group, but we need to get active. That's still part of what we're doing.
And you can't add on to the current magnet school because of so many issues?
I'll let those of you that were here maybe respond better than me, maybe Bob or Bill.
Yeah, we had looked into that once before and because of the wetlands and the neighborhood reaction initially to the magnet school, there really is no possibility to expand that site. If anything, you should know, if you've been there for any PTO function, the clock is a real premium of wages right now. But no, that school, if you took an aerial shot, the left side of the school is all wetlands, and then you have houses on the other side. So it's really kind of boxed in. There's really no place to go. And it's very few store of time. And so that's, I mean, that's not even an option to raise in the floor.
So the plan we needed to present to the board before the 29th of October, what your recommendations for the charter school application?
Yes, yes. It's to begin working on one and, you know, bring it forward to you. You can see, I just got that. It just came a couple of days ago and they're wanting it so quick. So it's not the kind of stuff they give you three and four months. But I certainly didn't want to stop working on it. It didn't all feel as though you want to lease beginning up. And that's why I tried to put it on for a fight. So I have a feeling to just begin, we can get that location and keep it in. Okay, great. And we'll also keep an eye on, we can contact the people on this expansion of that. Now, there's where money might show up on that magnet school. So we'll do a walk. Okay, great. American Carratech. We went to the council, you may recall, this is the effort that we've had in reading schools with a light project. That's not new to school district. You did something about ten, twelve years ago, we changed the Dallas light technology nowadays, we can redo it and do a lot more cost avoidance. There's also solar energy at two of the buildings. When we went to the subcommittee, they were concerned legitimately so on the, how would impact the new roofs to put these units on it. One unit is a, one that's a free standing unit. The other is one that has to go actually embedded into the surface of the fabric of the roof. So the council wanted to be assured that if in fact they did approve it and we did do it, that the integrity of the roof with its warranties would be kept intact. So the American Tech engineers sent that material and it arrived to the technicals of Ron's office. Help me out, where'd it go? To Mr. Alonso's office, correct? I'm here there now. It was sent to Mr. Alonso's office and he's vetting it out. So that's one thing that we're working on. The other thing is, was the price competitiveness. There was questions about the competitive bidding. You may recall when this, when the group came in, they approached us, they being this nerve, Carratech came in and it was that we hired them as consultant. They permitted to do it and then put together an application. They required that application process. The question was, was it competitive? Are these prices accurate? Are they good prices? And we're doing some things, we're looking at a joint meeting with the subcommittee along with American Carratech and also someone from Connecticut Light and Power and from the Clean Energy Fund, which are quasi-public agencies in terms of the competitiveness. They went over, they went over the bids and the numbers and vetted them for us that the prices were competitive and they were on target and were worth funding. That's why they funded it. But the committee wanted more assurances about venue prices, so we're still working on that. Just some questions. Now, the board was very mindful in telling Ameritech, if the award is given to them as a general, the expectations that are local businesses would be involved in the bidding process for all of the function. That was clear. So the committee was happy to hear that. It was a matter of whether or not we were to get some other bids or not beyond what we did do. So we're trying to work through that. Okay? Joe, I'm sure the committee knows.
I heard it.
Okay. Just to give you a minute to think about that.
We'll put that down for next. You know, pretty much what you said, yeah, there seems to have been a lot of concern about the bidding and also the local concern that local firms, as some contractors, and I think that was what was said, I think American Carrera pretty much said they're like the overseers, you might say. I forget what they call them, they did nothing.
He was general contractor.
And then they subcontract.
Project manager.
Everything, project manager. We just have to wait and see. The big problem, of course, Joe, you know, is the deadlines, right? You have the.
Yeah, we have deadlines and I didn't really think the council would do it without, I don't, you know.
We did get, thank you very much, we did get extensions. CNLP gave us extensions for the lighting and the Clean Energy organization also gave us an extension because they liked the project and they think it's worthwhile.
Six thousand seven. I didn't, I didn't know, but what was the problem with the bid? They wanted to go with it? I mean, is that the problem?
No, that was, we're very concerned with the fact of what happened and there were, some contracting would finally just put out that American Carrera is just as overseas and would subcontract out and obviously give preference to local firms. But that was brought up, that was a big concern of one of the members of the council. And then the deadlines because, you know, we were, and the committee were told about that problem and it's good to hear that it was extended. I just hope they do it. I mean, it's, it'd be nice to say we saved something, you know?
I think I just want to remind the board that American Carrera Tech comes from a list that, that.
Preferred.
Yes, a preferred list from CLMP and also from the grant office. So these people have already done their, been vetted. So for us to go up to bid again is redundant. I know, but it's redundant. So this is something that we have to get across to the council that they've already been vetted, all of the people who are on that preferred list are going to come in at the same price. So we really kind of wanted to skip that step, but that's something we have to assure the common council about.
Mr. Chairman, I did get, it's not, I don't think we can debate that with council. We have to have a public debate, but I don't think we'll do that.
Well, what's.
Yeah, what, what, following up with Stan, who was the chairman of the committee, was they, they wanted to know if those, you know, the numbers were competitive. We contacted, we through Ameritech, the organizations, they will come down and explain the bidding process. So they have assurances that.
Yeah, it's not just us telling them.
And that was their concern. I mean, it was a, so then we said we'd have the meeting with them at that time. So that's what we're working on.
Thank you, Ms. Glass.
I just want to take this time to congratulate Dr. Pastorella, everyone in his cabinet, every student in Danbury, every administrator in Danbury, and every teacher in Danbury. I'm reading here that Danbury was the number fifteen force district in the state that received praise from commissioner equivalent for having increased student achievement at rates faster than the state's. Good work, congratulations.
You're always welcome.
Chair, seeing some motion regarding action.
Has the Board of Education authorized the superintendent to hire an additional one point two full-time employee for special subject areas, art, music, physical education for the current school year as part of the Education Jobs Fund program?
Second by Mr. Tabersek, discussion and action.
My.
Mr. Scotty.
Yeah, I have no discussion, but as I mentioned in our last finance meeting, which I think the regular finance, I certainly hope that they have also a whole bunch of people that we decided was fine. We do need, and I have a problem with that, that we won't be giving these people face lifts, as I mentioned before, and another year because of our financial problems, as I, the mayor et cetera, said, we're not hiring in a priority list, and I did advocate to members of the legislature who are fairly high ones, and they're not going to give us a whole lot of knowledge. So just wanted to know how we were financially prepared, if these people will be listening to you, sort of that here today. And all this.
So, you know, I've heard you say before, you know, I'm very attached to the folk. That's what I'm talking about. It's thirty thousand, however.
Why, no, thirty thousand?
No, I'm saying to you, I don't have an answer to that. We're, this is very serious. We lost people last year, we lost positions. The mayor said he didn't have forty filled. Well, we're pretty close to, you know, thirty positions not filled. Maybe people in those jobs, we have unfilled positions. But we suggest here with this proposal is to take the one, two million, the one point two million dollars that we received from the Obama money on the stimulus, which has been confirmed now, and split it in half. Take half the money, spend it this year to handle about seven or eight teachers that we need to put in, back the other half for next year so that we're assured that in a month's time, we're not turning around cutting these people out. It's a problem. Problem. What's coming to sunset is the money on the first minute, which is about another one point two million dollars that we split originally, that we have to make up the difference. That we know is happening last year. That's coming to an end. So, I mean, we have that challenge. So we're banking whatever money we can now and we're trying to get grants to help us in other areas, but we're going to be challenged. But the way to handle this increase that we have now is that we need to split the money from the government, from the feds, over two years.
I agree with you. I, I'm not, I'm not just arguing with you.
That's the only thing, yeah.
But I'm also, we have the follow-through on our retirement plan, some of that one that I realized the retirement.
They were, no, they, no, because it took place, no.
I know, but the teachers that retired, they have to.
We can't lose any of this money.
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm saying that comes due every year, every year.
Yeah, it's supposed to mean, you know.
So that's a million dollars. The so-called Obama money is this new grant that the government just gave us, that's a long time ago. So we, I think Mr. Vazey was not here, but somewhere along the line, I think our finance groups are going to sit down and exactly for the next few months, exactly. Do you agree?
Yeah.
Right, I mean, I don't want to be, personally, I'll be honest with you, I don't want to take the foot. I don't want to sit here three months before and come down, say, we did deserve a good person, we did, and this, this, and this, and that, all kinds of things. I'd like to see what we're going to be doing for the next, let's say, the next, over next several months.
Some of this will be dependent on what all happens with your negotiations. That's good.
We're absolutely right.
And the bidding out of insurance, so all of those things already are on the mobile insurance.
Well, when I'm saying that, sounds like Mr. Vazey's ready, I would hope that most of the members of that committee will sit down and start working on this, we come back to, certainly come back to the whole council, I mean, they will, or what, or, or opinions, etc. We're quite sure, we all know that, in negotiations, we all know negotiations.
No.
It's all, yeah, we do know some people, of course, they have.
Dr. Glass, you want to comment on point two?
We've been working to make sure that, it's a terrible way to say it, but I think it's the easiest way to say it, when we have art, music, physical education, that time is also teacher prep time. So it's not something that we can turn around and say we choose not to offer art, we choose not to offer TE, or we choose not to offer music, because in doing that, we eliminate our ability, part of our ability to provide prep time. And that's really not why we offer our music and PE, because this is part of a good well run of the education, which is overall now. But as we've gone through the district and as you see the enrollment numbers increasing, and it goes back to Joe's point, it's pretty much sprinkled throughout the district and in a few places such as Elsinore, we've had some spikes over time. Elsinore was at fifteen classes a couple of years ago, now they're nineteen. So we have to add additional service time to make sure that those four teachers get art and music and get a PE. As we've gone through the district, we've asked Dr. Rupp, she would look at every schedule on the school system, move staff where she could, which she has been working on for weeks now. And as a result of that entire process, which shakes out, is that the one point two, we've actually found a way to get it down to one point zero. However, we're, we still have it as one point two on the agenda for the board because as we've been working this summer on the analysis of our CMT scores, we've made tremendous progress and as Sue mentioned, being recognized by the commissioner, one of the fifteen districts that really has moved forward. I'm very missive, I didn't mention that Mrs. Joe came and members of her staff are here tonight and they may say part of it the second time, are now unidentified. Just a wonderful job, one of the few schools in the state that was able to pull that off. However, we still have a number of really challenging, challenged youngsters, and a lot of those kids are family learning English language learners. It takes anywhere from five to seven years, sometimes as many as nine years for students to learn academic language. Listen to them after three years and they can converse in a conversational manner. Hi, how are you? Had a nice weekend. When you turn around and say, we want you to invert multiply, before you multiply, that's our algorithm, you've totally lost the kids. So it takes many more years to work through that. As we've been looking to try and find creative ways to do this, we've thought about the creation in a number of target schools, five elementary schools around the third grade level, to see if we can put in two hours a day of supplemental instructional support to our English language learners in those five schools. And in doing that, we could, it could be very cost-effective, momentum packages, et cetera. So we left that point two there for the board's consideration. So that, if you support this request, then that will give us a funding stream that allows to put this up and also support ELL kids in. At the same time, we would completely outfit the entire K-12 level for prep time and the appropriate art music and PE service time with ten thousand kids.
So Bill, so one of the areas, just expanding, would be environmental as one of the other areas that the one point two.
I'm sorry, that's, what I meant was that point two is for English language learner students, bilingual slash ESL, to help kids with vocabulary and language acquisition skills.
One question I would have is being, before, being mindful of that, of next year being more difficult than this year, we're trying to save as much of supplemental funding as possible. What, should the board not adopt this? What is the operational plan if you don't have this one point two?
The one, we, we need the one point zero just to be able to cover prep time. Again, it's kind of a crass way of saying that, you know, we'll get our music and PE, but contractually, we have to find a way to do that. And we have moved through the system in every possible way that we could, try and squeeze as much time out of each specialist. We have one teacher, for example, travels to seven different schools a week. And we've gone to that extreme measure just to make sure that we, it is creative and it's deep down, we deep down anything we possibly could. Point two is a one-year attempt to see if we can mitigate some of the deficits that we're seeing our kids come in with. It's, it's a, it's a, in a sense, a pilot project. If we eliminate next year, if these folks are not allowed to be come and hires, they'll simply be paraprofessional types, we'll bring in for two hours a day, no benefit package. It will be that kind of very limited employment at the end of the school year. If it doesn't work out, we don't see a demonstrable improvement. demonstrable improvement, we wouldn't ask to continue it anyway. We found that we use a similar approach with Moore Street School, it's called smart groups, and it simply means providing more literacy instruction for kids, and that was one of the key initiatives that helped Moore Street become the first school in the region to get off to this, and.
That the Board of Education approved the Rogers Park Middle School eighth grade Spanish II student field trip to Puerto Rico, January 13th through 18th, 2011, in accordance with 10-139.
Second by this, discussion and action made. This is more narrow.
Hello, glad you could come.
Good evening.
In the past, we have asked that as little interruption in class time as possible, what happened this year?
This past year?
No.
Or this one?
This new one, this new trip.
This, this, in January 2011, if you're seeing me to do, the students will actually be out of Rogers Park for one and a half days, but when we are in Puerto Rico again, and we have done in the past, we will be spending a day attending classes in Puerto Rico, so it would actually be a half a day, assuming that they would be out.
So, how many days will the kids be on school, will you be out, just a half day?
It would be, yeah, the same thing, we would, as teachers, we would be out of our classrooms for a day and a half.
A day and a half.
Right, and then with the students in the school.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott.
How many, how many teachers, does that mean, three?
Um, three, well, it depends upon how many students go.
How many, how many, how many staff go off the students?
Um, we follow the criteria that is set forth for students and field trips and teachers, last year we did have 19 students, one was actually a special needs.
How many teachers?
So, we had four adults, but one was a special needs.
Well, I'm getting at it, it's three, yeah, it's all, it's all, it's only a teacher.
It was three teachers.
Three teachers, with 19 children.
Yes, well, it was, it was total four adults, but three teachers.
Right, so that's three classrooms.
Right.
Mr. Tavasak.
I, we keep going over this, I remember this, or you mentioned this before, maybe we already in visit, and now, when I look at the teachers leaving for a day and a half, I think of all the students in Rogers Park who are missing the teaching of those three teachers, and I just can't support it on the basis, I feel that, yes, these wonderful students, 20 are getting great benefits, but the fact that for a day and a half, you're taking two or three full-time faculty out, that this does not benefit the students who are left, as someone who had field trips, we always, as a teacher, way back, we always tried to recruit everybody who was running the school day, so, you're not, like I said, I feel like broken, I'm sorry, and it's nothing against you three people or anything, it's just that I feel that when I look at the balance, it's not a balance that I can go.
I have a couple of questions, regarding this trip relative to last year, are the number of school days missed the same or less?
A half day less.
A half day less, so last year was two full days.
Two full days, yes.
And.
I'm getting there.
You're making progress.
I'm trying, yeah, you're getting there.
The other question I have is, does this school in Puerto Rico, I guess the Monday, is Monday?
Monday is holiday day as well.
Oh, this is holiday day as well, okay, I see, that would be an option.
Right, yes, we tried a number of different permutations.
And is there any concern, I noticed in the itinerary, that the flight arrives at about 11:30 at night, and they're going to school early the next morning, is there any concern?
Um, we have actually found that the adrenaline level is not stable through the day, they're pretty excited to get there, so, and then the following day is Saturday, so we have a little bit later start to our day then, they're kind of, yes, and that's the other piece of it too, the hotel is not even 10 minutes from the airport, and the school itself is not even 10, 15 minutes, so, we're not talking a great amount of travel time, so, we do get back to the hotel quickly, settle in very quickly, and they're kind of up and about early the next day, a little anxious, because they're not quite sure what to expect, but very excited at the same time, that's not been a problem, they kind of catch us up to them Saturday, so that's, we have planned for that, and that's worked out very well.
And the last question I have is, given the flights in the evening, is it necessary in this half-day, or?
That's not, we actually leave after school that day, the half-day we'll be missing is Tuesday traveling back.
Oh, Tuesday.
Because, yes, the cost of the airfares to come back on the holiday are considerably more, and that is at the half-day, that's why it's at the half-day.
We discussed, that was, and let, every second here, every second here, I just have to ask one question, not to you, but to administration, if, we don't leave approval, disapproval trips that are out of the country, right, and I know that there's trips, because my granddaughter went to Washington DC for two, three, two days, I can, I don't remember, I remember financing, just don't remember what happened, but is that during school time? Is, I don't know, how many days did they, they go?
Three, three, four, three nights, four days, yeah, but they all go, well.
All, all the ones, for some, for some reason, this one, they don't, it's financial, they don't, they don't, they don't all, do they?
No.
No, so, basically, where I'm coming from, is that they took this last year, again, we turned down something, it was the one, we turned this one down, and then we came back and reassigned it up, so what's the difference about this year from last year? I mean, Mr. Tavasak, I mean, did you, did you check?
Well, no, what I'm saying, go through the same process of.
I mean, we turned it down, then we turned, gave it back, and then they, they, these youngsters, they go off, law enforcement, the United States, they're going to they are, and we don't even have to come here, and they take days off, and we put substitutes in for our ass, because this one field trip that they do take, that is out of the country, we have to, why would this be any different, I mean, as you say, not all children go, but they, I hear all children go, uh, it's all the different, no, so they, that was.
How many students are left in classes that substitutes will be doing in those days that you're gone, I mean.
For our trip?
Yeah, in other words, you have three teachers here?
Yeah.
Okay, and how many students do you teach in a school day, I mean, so what I'm saying, that block, of course, will be having substitutes, right?
Yes.
Okay, and what I'm saying is, I met the, I always feel that the classroom teacher provides a better quality education than substitutes, maybe I'm wrong on this, okay, but the thing is, you know, I, I really feel that a small number is benefiting at what is the loss to the large majority, and I just can't abide that, but, like I said, I hate doing this all the time, the board always has majority, but the thing is, I feel I'm right on this, and I'm going to state my objection.
That's probably.
I'm going to vote yes on this, or once in my life, because, because you have heard us, and you're trying, you're now down to one and a half days that you're out of school, last year, I don't think you heard us at all, but I, I appreciate you trying to limit the time that you're going to be out in the classroom, because as Mr. Tavasak has said over and over again, you're going to be missed by the other children left at times.
I mean, and that's where there's a compliment to this.
Yes, well, thank you, and truly, it is a responsibility that we don't take lightly, and we do try to make as best plans as we can for our students when they're not there, we do take that into consideration.
And thank you for hearing us, and I, I appreciate that it's going to be a half day less out of the classroom, thank you.
Mr. Cooper.
My question is, if the trip has to be canceled, what liability will it be to you? If, for some unseen reason, you have to cancel the trip?
Correct, a couple of things, first of all, because we don't use a booking service, we do this on our own, so the only thing that the students are responsible for paying upfront that is not refundable is airfare, we do make that clear to parents and students as well, and then, so should the trip be canceled for any reason, the airfare itself would be non-refundable, everything else, the hotels, meals, and everything else would be refundable, we also make sure that they recognize that, you know, there is no liability, if you, the board tell us that for whatever reason we can't go, that it's not your responsibility, it's just the situation that presents it, so.
Just say, if you have a student that's, that's worth as far as fundraising, and they can't reach the four, nine hundred and fifty dollars, what do you do to help that student?
Um, in the past, we had, as students, we had a scholarship a couple of years ago, those disappear very quickly in these times, but if there is a student, you know, we'd be happy to work with them as best we can, the fundraisers that we have in place go directly to the student, as, so, if, for example, the student said, you know what, I'm not, I don't think I'm going to make my goals, so that student can take those and put them towards perhaps another field trip within the school, for example, if they were going on the Washington DC trip, they could take those monies and allocate it to that if they so chose.
Any further discussion?
All right, this one, Mr. President, just on a educational point, I see the principal's here, thank you for coming, I mean, what is your opinion of, you know, this trip, we'll do it every year, and as I said to you about the other trips, which I personally don't know, I don't know because of the thing involved, are they worth it, I mean, I know children love it.
Well, I think it's a unique opportunity for a child to be able to attend a school in Puerto Rico for the day, in addition to all the other things, the time that they spend in the rainforest, but certainly spending a day in a very different school environment is an opportunity that children are not going to be able to, to partake in any other time. A family might take their child to Puerto Rico, but the chances that they're going to be able to spend a whole day in a school is going to be pretty rare, so that's a very unique opportunity.
And you have to go back to my other question, that you do have other field trips that are in the act of, you know, local, apparently, that we do the same thing, that we get substitutes.
Well, we have Philadelphia, our seventh graders are going to be going overnight, and the Washington trip.
The Washington trip, right.
And.
So, basically, we've been punishing, or not punishing, but denying, one group?
It's become a very popular trip, I have to say.
For the time being, there, we've had a controversial question, we're here, okay, thank you very much.
Any further questions, discussion, seeing, all those in favor of action made in deep to signify this, are you?
I.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion extension, motion extension, the motion carries, Mr. Tavasak is opposed. Is what, uh, correction?
Thank you very much, thank you.
On curtailation of the back-to-school document calendar, Mill Ridge Educational Center.
Yeah, the back-to-school calendar is there, under the back table, when you, I guess we also have it here, let's see, we're right in front of the Tavasak, Mill Ridge Educational Center, we couldn't call it Mill Ridge, we had to rename it for record, so, we were calling it Mill Ridge Educational Center.
I have a question, if I may. Does this cost the district money to put in newspaper, was this something?
We stick it in there, Bob, help me out with that, we put it into the.
Yeah, it's done as an insert into the news times, I don't think the gas station is.
But reducing its costs, reducing costs, so.
The base minimum.
Has there been any thought to doing a online version of this to cut out the flipping feature?
Well, you have the bus runs online, that, that, that has an official price.
You know, that serves as the official notification for us with suspensions, expulsion, and you, so we're assured that that is mailed, you know, if we put it online, then you don't know, so, when I went through this, do we really need my picture, and that would be sent to me, the answer is no, but the thing of it is, that your official notification has a board. Yeah, no, everybody didn't have to, you know.
Mr. Tavasak.
I would just like to say that I am happy to see that we have a different picture of Sal, certainly, I'm tired of that photograph that looks like you're pissed off all the time, I know you are probably pissed off all the time.
No, I'm not, no.
This is a fair question.
So, you, just, I talked to Angela, we'll be getting her meeting sometime to pre-order her nets, we'll coordinate, we'll contact the organs, Mr. Tavasak, well, however, the time, usually four thirty, something like this, to her administration, and there are quite a few items we're going to put on there, it's, it's my time to, I'll just one second, Mr. Chairman, and I don't want to deliver this, but since we're having a local affair with the city, maybe we should, just one thing, just trying to keep in my mind, but I just want you, for all to think about this, any money that we do save, we always have to give back to the city, we all, I think that should be on the line, when we do negotiate, talk to the city, that if we do save money, hopefully we can, I mean, certainly we'd like to work on certain things, I'd say, save money, but I don't want to work on saving money, just to go back there, so, I think that would be, I think for our whole trip we can do it, so, I mean, just, you agree, is that something we could talk about?
Sounds like more of a party.
That's what I mean, I want, the only reason I mention that, Mr. Vazey, is not to have Mr. Tavasak here, and your children, so I just mentioned that.
As long as you're doing sites and facilities, and all the world's schools have a fire alarm problem, and that's the new school there, but they have a problem with their panel, we've had a fire watch there, I think last Friday, and today, we're not able to get this part of the weekend, so, I don't know if you have an update, if she was able to get her, okay, well, until they get the part without a fire watch there.
There's a possibility, I don't know, they're, they're taking that, I hope.
Yeah, well, yes, they have been, but I just wanted to know if they're over here, that's, that's, uh.
Thanks, Mrs. Scott, Scott. Community relations is absent, finances absent, operations policy, Mr. Tavasak.
Well, we, I've been meeting as part of a group with personnel director, we're trying to come up with something that's been brought up the board a number of times, the procedure of hiring, I've got some questions, and pretty much, it's a special committee, but Mike Fazio is on it, finance, and I'm on it, and all, so, it's not really that committee right here, I feel that's, we're, you know, what we've pretty much been working on, it's been the summer.
Yeah, as long as we're on this, just so you know, until the committee finishes work, that we'll have interims in positions, over at Rogers Park, we'll have an interim there, we'll also, with Mr. Manos leading, we'll have an interim there as well, until it finishes the process, something did come up, and over at King Street, Mr. Skiles will join out at the end of October for about six or eight weeks with him, he had some knee surgery two years ago, it just didn't take well, so, he will have to go out again, and we'll be operating, I know by then we'll have the process done, but our thinking right now, as we have to administrate, is there, Mrs. Hissler, is there, she would be, the natural, the acting principle, and then, we have an interim assistant to take over for Tina, because we just need to be there and operationalize in place, so, that, that'll, that'll happen, we'll break those out, that's one, he announced it to his staff last week, that's one, make sure, you know, not.
Thinking of operations, we really haven't heard in this meeting about how King Street opened because of the new structure and the new, the Mill Ridge students coming in, would anyone be able to comment on how smoothly or not that place?
Is that, was that before a committee, are you, are you willing to do that?
I'm sorry.
Are you willing to do that?
I'm sorry.
Are you willing to do that now, or do you?
Sure, sure, I'll take a moment, it was, it was remarkable, I have nothing but accolades for the faculty and the staff, we did construction, as you know, over at Mill Ridge Primary, Dr. Cronin was in, I think, every day of the summer, cleaning and going through cabinets and measuring things, and the facilities team came in, and they just moved through very quickly, the city worked with us, permits, teachers came in.
teachers came in, it was, it's just remarkable, if you go to the school now, it looks as if it's always been just the way it is, it's just, it's beautiful. Same thing up at King Street, I walked the building with Mr. Scales, visited every single classroom at the intermediate level, then visited every single classroom at the primary level, every single teacher was teaching, kids were all on task, everybody looked to be happy, it didn't look like it was a disarray at all, same thing, I walked every classroom with Dr. Cronin, every, kids were, I mean, teachers had been shifted all over the place, materials, as you know, were moved all over the place, the technology, for the most part, was up and running, I mean, it was just a wonderful pulling together of the entire team throughout the district, everybody who had a hand in this just performed flawlessly. And so, if I challenged a group of people that come into our elementary schools and find two or three schools that have been affected by this, they wouldn't be able to do it, just a...
How about King Street?
Same thing with King Street, the teachers have embraced the leadership, I sat in on the meetings, I talked to a lot of the teachers individually afterward, I walked the building, as I mentioned, very thumbs up, very favorable to both Mr. Scales and Mrs. Hisslop. The tenor in the building is very positive, I think it's kind of like a renaissance, and over at Mill Ridge Primary, the same thing, the teachers who came from intermediate level down to third grade, it's a good feeling in the building, it's just, it's just one of our success stories, it's a nice way to start a new school year, by having so many people in such a good place, nice job on all their parts.
I want to thank everyone for their job all done.
We also had Reach movement, remember Reach rebound, they did that, and that's all going well, right, Bob? So that they were there most of the time, so all of it, we've got to say thank you for some of the reading, because, you know, the city was busy, but they, you know, they managed to get that work done, we had some parking issues at Mill Ridge that we're working on, primary, but they were able to get everything done, which was amazing, I'm not even concerned about it, but it seemed to work out really well.
The last question, were there any transportation issues on the former million students getting onto King Street, or the same?
No. We, it was a different year than last year with transportation, and, you know, a few kinds of things, where we had two youngsters who decided to get off the bus, one youngster got off the bus, two houses found, and you tell them to mom. We had two kindergartners who did a remarkably wonderful job of getting on the bus and taking off, problem is they're walkers. Just wanted to ride the bus, so we used the, you know, the walkie-talkies and tracked them down, brought them back home. So that was a pretty good, actually, a very good opening.
And over at the Mill Ridge Educational Center, Sula Vass is there with her, you know, group, and that has made a nice transition as well, so it's working now. Thanks, everybody's efforts.
So, further evaluation, Mr. Tavasak?
Yes, Dr. Pasquale is working on his, yes, and will be having a meeting very shortly.
Thank you. So do you have PTO, is that correct?
Next Monday.
Next Monday. Thank you.
And then, I think most of our district committees are absent. Seeing no further discussion, Mr. Tavasak?
I just want to say one more thing. Joyce, Joyce, I want you to be happy, but I'm really, really sad that you're retiring, and I don't think that anybody in the city can appreciate all the hard work that you've been doing, 37 years, for the kids in this town, and I'm really sad for all the kids that you're retiring, I don't know if you know that, so you should reconsider.
And I just want to say, Joyce, I agree, and I know, as they say, you know, people retire, I think that you did make an impression, and you showed up at every meeting, and you were a real good part of this organization. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, the chair seeks a motion to move to executive session.
So who?
Your friend, Mr. Tavasak, is accepted.
Accepted.
Second amendment, Mr. Tavasak, discussion, all those capable, this is a fair decision, aye?
Aye.
Close, extension, we now have an executive session, okay, we'll take it to the next one.